To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Vicki, are you gonna stay over there?
No.
You have a choice of seats tonight, that's okay. I'll let you sit wherever you want, Vic.
Well, thank you, dear.
I just wanted you to be settled in there. She can sit wherever she wants.
Mr. Jervinator isn't here tonight, so I'll sit my own way.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Bike Man, B Singer.
Present.
Boss.
Present.
EKIS. Frye. Gross.
Present.
Troller.
Present.
Trom.
Present.
We have a forum.
All right, that's good. The first item is approval amendments from the December 11th meeting. I do not have any amendments. Does anyone have amendments? And I would entertain a motion.
Move to approve the minutes of the regular meeting, December 11th, 2017, as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Five oh. Public comments? Anyone that is not on the agenda who would like to come and share may come to the podium, share for five minutes, state your name, your address, and your ward. All right, we will move along to business and discussion items. Jason, you're up first.
Good evening, mayor and council.
Evening.
I'm Jason Hoskinson. I'm a transportation engineer with BG Consultants. And as I'm sure you saw in your packet tonight, I'm here to give an update on the Highway 36 Access Management Plan. I handed out some information for you just a few minutes ago. There's a kind of a little memo sheet. I'm gonna kind of summarize just there. Hitting some of the high points here, go through that. And I was gonna say, I've got some extras if you're missing. Don't worry. I'm just gonna hit some of the high points about what the plan is about, what we've looked at, some of the suggestions and recommendations that are coming about. And really, what I'm here tonight for is to just get any kind of input and feedback from the council on where this is headed. We're not at a stage where we need any kind of formal action from the council tonight, but that will be coming. And so I'll kind of talk a little bit about the plan here. Some of you may remember, a little over a year ago, KDOT and the city entered into an agreement to develop an access management plan. Lots of new developments and things happening along the highway, lots of access points, existing and future ones that are needed for businesses and whatnot. But there was no good plan in place as to how to handle that and handle increased flow and traffic and things of that nature. So, anyway, we came on board, hired by the city and KDOT, actually probably just by KDOT, I think it was through KDOT's contract, but with the city's input. So we've been working with the city and KDOT now, analyzing the corridor, looking at your long-range plans, future land use maps, traffic flow, you name it, looking at the transportation network, basically from 4th Street out to the east city limits. And then developing some suggestions and recommendations on how to better handle the traffic along the corridor. We're looking at whether you need additional lanes or what the capacity looks like of the highway itself. And as you see, maybe some of my notes here under "traffic volume data analysis," really a three-lane is sufficient for now and to, for some foreseeable future. It's the access points where we get into some congestion. If you can better manage that, you can get a better capacity out of your highway, a safer capacity out of the highway. And really, that brings us back to the purpose of the access management plan, is to identify what sites maybe don't comply with current requirements, and then if they were to redevelop or sell or change hands or when something happens. We've got this plan that we're looking at that puts into place a tool or a guide for city staff and for KDOT staff as to how to handle those developments and those changes in use. So, we've been going through that, we've been looking at access issues, and I'm probably glossing over a lot here, but I just kind of want to get some of the suggestions out there, and then I'll be here to answer any questions and take any suggestion. I have the same four maps that you have, but I've got a bigger version of them. So I was gonna just kind of walk you through here what this map is showing. And this is a component of something you suggested, or it's gonna be included in the plan. It hinges off of your long-range transportation plan, long-range comprehensive plan documents. And what we're doing with this plan is you can kind of see there's legend up here, we're showing how your street network's laid out. You've got your arterial streets, those are the most important ones that you want to carry traffic flow. Right now, the highway, Highway 36, does that. If we were planning out a brand-new city, we would plan for the only intersections or the access points to a arterial or to a highway to be your collector streets. You want typically one of the businesses to access the side streets and frontage roads and things of that nature, and then bring them out to the highway at controlled places. Well, if you look at particularly east of the lake, so out by 12th, 11th Road, 12th Road, things of that nature, a lot of that street network, the city street network, parallel the highway, isn't really there yet. I think you got some ideas of how you can get there. We've shown some additional ideas of future collector streets, future local streets, and ways to get access and connections to the highway. But that map here kind of overviews your general transportation network. Some of the recommendations that we're looking at incorporating into the corridor plan, I'm gonna kind of start on west end and east, so we're kind of backwards with how the world's oriented here, but these are also on the list on that handout there. But the very west end of the corridor, kind of next down, you don't have any turn lanes there for the side streets. We were suggesting a possible improvement to address the curb lines through there, maybe provide on-street parking. There may be an interim solution to that, that I was actually talking to councilwoman Beth Nigger here. Maybe doing away with the on-street parking and utilizing the curb-to-curb width that's there now, might be able to restructure that and put in a left turn lane. So, again, this is a living document, and there's multiple ways to kind of tackle that, but we're trying to identify some of these big-picture ideas of how you better improve your traffic flow and access points through town. Another one, US 36 and 7th Street, probably all familiar with that, and heading on north there. I think the UP Railroad's option for anything up there expires in about a year. I haven't heard anything from them. I don't think Austin, you've received any phone calls recently. So, I know we can't really do a whole lot until that expires, but it is coming up, and there could be a potential for some type of geometric improvement at that location, trying to improve the geometry of that intersection.
Well, we could do that, whether that US PDS comes through or not, right? It would just restructure how we would create it. But we could still make that improvement, even with that business back there to the north, right?
As long as we don't adjust the widths at the entrance.
Right, right.
Yeah, I was gonna say, you can improve it, to my knowledge, you just have to include...
We would have to include their availability, yeah.
Maybe you get what you want, maybe not. And really, well, in the access management plan, we've actually shown a solution where you could use like a tighter intersection, but overflow ramps, if you will, or oversweeping ramps, kind of like a roundabout. You go to a roundabout, that center island is made for trucks to drive on because they're big and they take up room. You can do that same concept on the side, where you still delineate a smaller, narrower width of intersection, but there's space there for a big vehicle to get through if they needed to, with a wind turbine or something like that. Some options there, but again, conceptually, you know, some options there, so. The US 36 and 8th Street, there was some discussion after the, or during the open house meeting about possibly removing that traffic signal, and I know that's come up.
When has that come up before?
When he was here before.
Yeah, it was at our open house meeting.
But I've never heard the council talk about...
I brought it up several times.
To take the stoplight out?
A lot of years ago.
And, but 8th Street?
Eliminated.
8th Street?
Why would we want to do that? Why would we want to do that?
A lot of people complain that the north-south light isn't long enough now.
Yeah, but part of the time, the light changes, and there's nobody to go across.
Well, that would have...
Well, for the stop sign there, you wait for traffic, you're gonna go across. There ain't that much traffic going through there.
Yes, there is.
No, there's not.
Yes, there is.
It shows here that there's 78 hundred...
We can discuss that later, at a later date.
I'll be here later, so.
I'll interject a comment and the thoughts of that. We've got a camera that we set up at intersections to do traffic studies, and we were gonna set it up this year, but they've been, you know, doing the mill and overlay work and things like that, and school's out, and weather, you know, not a good representative sample to set it up here through the holidays and whatnot. So, we're planning on setting that camera up and collecting some traffic, updated traffic count data next month.
Okay.
The past, the last time that was studied, five years ago, I think it was, it did not meet traffic signal warrants. It's there, just because it doesn't meet warrants, it doesn't mean you have to take it out, it's there, it was grandfathered in by whatever. But we're just gonna look at that a little more closely and provide some suggestions there. It may or may not result in recommendations there. There's other things we can do as well, like putting video detection and things like that there, so that it only turns for the side street when maybe somebody is there or a couple of cars are there.
We had that at 20th Street.
Mm-hmm, 20th Street has it. That's actually one of our suggestions, is to install it and follow the signals throughout here to... You'll actually see a pretty good improvement just by putting that in.
Yep. I thought our goal was to synchronize them.
Then you can synchronize them with that. So if you replace the guts...
Can you synchronize them and do it based on opposite traffic flow?
Yeah, there's a lot...
Which one overrides?
You can pick and choose. It's a computer, basically, and you can set a bunch of parameters in there that gives it a minimum and a maximum, but then it triggers itself back on a cycle to hit a green for the highway at a certain time. But you have to link them all up. You can do that wirelessly, or you can do it with the old-fashioned way with a cable in the ground. There's a number of ways that can be accomplished, so.
Do our offices have the ability to control that now?
I don't think there is.
That they can change the lights through?
I don't think there is. Vehicle preemption or emergency preemption. And that is another thing you can add. On a new system, they're about $10,000 for a new intersection to plug that in. Then your emergency vehicles, it just have to have a strobe that flashes.
Can install it on my vehicle?
There's a story about that, but I won't get into that. US 36 and 10th Street is another possible geometric improvement we've identified. Y'all know where, how the turn lane stop bar's set way back, so traffic can sweep around. To make an improvement there, you may have to look at purchasing a building to do that, or part of a building. It's something we've kind of talked about with city staff as we've been talking through this plan. Maybe it's something that can happen, maybe not, but...
Well, we, pardon me, what we need at that intersection is the 36 east-west is to put a two-second delay on that turn signal that turns people to the left, because it goes to green, and then it goes to arrow green, and then it goes to solid green. It doesn't tell them, "Stop, you no longer have right-of-way to turn left, you're gonna have oncoming traffic." There's been more accidents there because of that exact thing. They see that green, it never turns to red, so they never stop, even though now oncoming traffic has a green light, too.
It turns to yellow.
Yeah, but it doesn't turn, it doesn't turn red.
Even in the big towns, they turn to yellow.
Look, it doesn't turn red. How many people run that yellow light? They consider that slow green.
How many people stop at stop signs in this town?
Yeah, that's a problem, too.
Okay, I rest my case.
Have addressed the police about that, not getting cooperation? Thank you.
There's, there are some newer, I'll call it newer technologies, that we've been putting in on new signals where it's a flashing yellow arrow. So you've got for that left turn to get the left green, and then it goes left yellow, these are solid indications. And then it goes to left yellow flashing with your yield to oncoming traffic was flashing. So, you know, that could be a solution for that location, and it may not take a whole lot of anything other than a new signal head to address it, but...
If it didn't turn red, they're not gonna stop.
I'm gonna keep rolling down here, 12th Road. Oh, sorry, I copied that over. That's supposed to be US 36 and 11th Road, not 12th Road. That intersection right now meets signal warrants, it's not signalized. There's a lot of traffic there, and talking with Landall, you know, they use 11th Road shooting on up north, a lot of left-turning trucks and equipment and vehicles and whatnot. That, I think, is a very good candidate for a geometric improvement project. Turn lanes, right turn lanes, improving the side street, improving your street, 11th Road, going north and south there. When we were talking about this with city and KDOT staff at one of our meetings, the idea of maybe a roundabout at that location came up, and I don't know...
Oh, man, everybody that's heard that word.
I know some communities accept it and others don't. I get that, and that does...
We got a letter to the editor, and everybody that's stopped me, I'm not even saying that word anymore.
Well, we're, you know, you've got a signalized corridor from 20th Street West, and what we're leaning towards with some of our recommendations would be to continue that signalized corridor, maybe not quite so closely spaced, but 11th Road's a good candidate, 12th Road's a good candidate, collector streets at two or three locations in between those, that one mile, would be a good candidate. And, you know, you never know where things will be 30 or 40 years from now. Maybe another signal needs to be in the middle there. Half-mile is a good rule of thumb for traffic signal spacing, for syncing the traffic flows. And then the last bullet point that we've got, and this is kind of a catch-all, but there's a lot of, all the dashed lines here could be future side street improvements that help improve traffic flow and access out to the highway. So, you can see a bulk of that is really out on the eastern half of the town. Speed limit's a little higher, and I think that's, from what we're seeing from an engineering perspective, that's where a lot of the access problems could come about, really where you need to look at a street network that can support the highway rather than forcing everybody to take access to the highway, because there is no street network there. I think that really highlights all the things I wanted to mention tonight. I'll kind of wrap up just a couple little comments here and be glad to answer any questions you have, continue any kind of conversation there. We are, call it about 60 to 75% complete with the access plan. We're continuing to take all these comments from the open house meeting, I was at the planning commission earlier this month, city council tonight. We're gonna incorporate those ideas, try to finalize the report, that draft will probably go out to city staff and KDOT again, and city staff is more welcome to share it with the council. Ultimately, this report will come to the city council, and KDOT is going to ask for your buy-in on the plan. They, the way this works, when these communities go through an access plan, a corridor plan, something like that, the plan's developed, and once everybody's more or less happy with it, there's a memorandum of understanding that's agreed upon between Marysville and KDOT that says, "As the community grows, as things change, we're gonna try to generally comply with this plan for access and street network and things like that." In exchange for that, they offer a funding program to help you implement these improvements. So, there's access management projects, which, once you have your MOU in place, you're eligible to apply for that. There's not, it's a pretty good-sized pot of money, but there's not a lot of communities to compete for it. You can get a, up to a $2 million construction project, they'll pay up to $2 million, dollar for dollar, right, or 100% of the first $2 million on construction, and then the city pays for any of the engineering or right-of-way purchases or things like that. But it's a really good program. It's a, from what I've seen, it's about the best program KDOT has as far as how much you have to put in to maximize your output from KDOT into your community to help you make these improvements. One thing with that is, oh, and I didn't mention to these, the other three sheets there, these show some, the blue areas show opportunities to either close or reconfigure access as properties change and redevelop and sites redevelop. If those entrances are in the way of one of these access management projects, they're gonna encourage you to either close that access or work with those businesses to try to reconfigure their parking lot and their driveways and things of that nature, so. That's kind of where we're headed with all that. I'll just turn it over to you guys for any kind of discussion.
Is there, is there an advantage to having a street identified as an arterial or collector road for KDOT funding? Or is it really more just future development?
Well, yes, it's kind of both. There's not as many people competing for the money, but there are other communities competing for it. And so the farther you get away from the highway, or the less important that road is to the overall plan, the lower they're gonna rate your application versus other people's applications. So, let's say, for example, 11th Road, you know, there's been a lot of, "Yeah, we need a signal there." That's probably a really good candidate. Arterial Street, arterial Street, lots of turning traffic, it meets a signal warrant, it needs some turn lanes.
Well, I guess I was thinking more like a 20th Street, because our 20th Street is, which is already an existing arterial street, will have to have some major repairs on it fairly soon. And with it being identified on this study as an arterial street...
Oh, extended to the north.
Yeah, like, I'm just thinking from, you know, from Highway 36 to North Street, some of that is gonna have to be redone because of the traffic usage on that road. So, because it's already identified as an arterial street on this, is funding available for 20th Street, or really more the potential, potential arterial streets?
Depends on how well it's functioning, if there's some safety problems extended on north, or if there's some added benefit. It's, that's a two-lane street right now, right, I think. So if it would, if, say you went to a three-lane, put in a turn lane, and made some connections into some side streets that help traffic around the community, I think you could show an access benefit as part of the plan. Now, just pavement replacement of 20th Street going on north, I don't know that it's gonna score that well on an access management application.
Just curious, if there's a benefit to that?
Why did we not have the study go on out to Reading Heights on the west side?
They were numbers used by, KDOT determined where the end was. The, at the beginning, what's her, what's the...
NELDA.
NELDA. She told me the amount of lane miles that this would cover, and it went from this point to this point, and that's what they covered.
I'd like to ask you about future collector street, North Street. It's the longest east-west street. Some of it is in place, but just west of the airport, it is a future. Now, I have a question about that. Most of this follows a grid, but this North Street goes along to 11th Road, and then you take a dip down for several blocks and go along, and then you go up again, back up to where it was, back to North Street, north. And is this because of the top topography there, or is this because of land access, or can you do, can you do eminent domain? How are you gonna, how are you gonna have all this with so many people owning land in between? A lot of this is farmland.
Yeah, to a certain extent, that is, that is based on topography and property lines, and it's also based on some of the discussion of potential developments. There's been some talk with some, a sketch plan, concept plan, who knows if it'll go anywhere, but 11th Terrace extended north and then tying into that property back behind the Walmart in there as a possible development. There's a couple of things, this, whether this curves down, or curves a little ways, or goes straight, the concept there is to have a collector up here and then a collector tying out to your arterials, so you can get that traffic out. Now, I think you've got some advantages here by showing a collector street network like this. When a development comes in play, you can, as they develop their street network, you know now, if they have an east-west street here, generally where that collector needs to be, you could get it built to a collector standard. And then in the future, if this develops, you can connect on through, and where that connects in at 11th Road, you know, that's, eventually the value of property, the value of land claims itself, when there's development happening around it, there's gonna be more development happening around existing development. So, this is not a five-year plan or a 10-year plan, this is a long-range vision of how that street network can play out. Now, you mentioned eminent domain. If the city wanted to initiate a project and you wanted to extend a street on through there, the city would be responsible for buying any rights-of-way that are needed for the street. And in that case, yeah, typically in a design process like that, you would, we'd survey it, go through a preliminary design and identify the footprint of where that thing makes the most sense to be at, and then you can define what ground you would need from the different landowners to make that connection happen. Then you can go, you can approach them and see if they'll donate it, you can purchase it for an appraised value, or you can go through eminent domain if you wanted to. There's a number of ways that could be handled, but it's just a question of whether the city wants to pursue a street in that fashion.
This is, this is going across a lot of land that's been in the same family for a very long time. You just explained highest and best use, but the farmers that have been on the same land for generations, they're not interested in highest and best use. So what if you, I don't know, this is really a big push, when you get to certain areas and then it's not gonna go through, and you've tried to initiate new businesses to come in because it would be a frontage, and then it doesn't happen. So, what do you do then? Do you go up, up a couple acres and try to go across another way? I mean, you have to restructure this whole thing, don't you?
It's possible you may have to shift some of those lines around. But again, the intent here is to show how you have a collector street network, you know, like you mentioned your grid network down here, where you have a lot of streets stacked up in blocks. Whether this jogs down to here or goes up there, I think, right now, from what I'm hearing and seeing, there's maybe a more near-term potential for something that could put a development in that location north of Walmart that could potentially get you part of your collector street build. And then, if you've got a collector street north-south, call that 11th Terrace tying in there, then maybe you can jog a little to the north and then come around. There's a number of ways that could be done.
So, did you do, did you do this, did you draw this to accommodate what possibly will go here?
No, we drew it to accommodate some discussions of what might be there and where that might go. But again, whether, and we're also looking at topography, looking at existing development, there's a lot of houses over here, it's gonna be hard to pull a collector street out onto 11th Road. North Street would probably make the most sense to tie into up here because it's already there.
Right.
But if we can get some collector streets back here, that gives some opportunities for Pizza Hut, Walmart, all those areas. There's a lot of benefits to where it's shown from a transportation perspective. But I understand there's more than just transportation when it comes to putting a project together. You gotta figure out who owns land where, and, you know, are they looking to sell? Are they not interested? There's a number of ways that could be handled, though.
So what do you need from us tonight? Just for us to study it, or communication with us, or what do you need from us?
The main thing I wanted to do was get in front of you, kind of talk about what we've been looking at, where we're headed, provide some of the, cut down a lot of trees to generate plans and maps and whatnot, but just get some of this information in front of the governing body so you can digest it, look at it. If you have any comments about it, pass them along to Austin, and he can get those to me. I may have, I didn't put my email address on here, but he's got my email address, and I'd be more than happy to talk with you about it. Like I said, ultimately, we're gonna be bringing a plan back to the council, and KDOT's gonna be here saying, "Okay, we've got something that city staff likes, we like, we hope the council likes it, too, so we want to involve you in that process," before we just show up and say, "Well, you've signed this agreement to implement this plan."
So, on, if we have members of our community that look at this and say, "Well, I don't like it that you're taking out my entrance point here and putting a frontage road here," we can calm them to say, "Only when the development warrants it would we even consider it." Is that a correct way to put it?
Yeah, the way I've seen most of these plans implemented, when it shows access closures and changes and things like that, that's one of those things where most people that have their business there and they see, "I've got two access points, and you're saying you're gonna consolidate it into one, I gotta share it with my neighbor." That's not gonna happen. Well, that's okay. Now, long-range, let's say they sell their property, or it changes, or a McDonald's comes in and buys two lots and puts in their development. This plan is a tool that Austin and Dave, city staff, can use when they come in and ask for free entrances and say, "Well, we really need to do it..." and say, "Well, we really need to do it in this fashion. We've got a plan in place to do this." That's your opportunity to implement the plan piece by piece by piece. But there's a vision of where it would go long-term. Now, one other thing I'll add to that. If somebody came in and wanted to develop it now, the recommendations we have are based on the current access management policy that KDOT has. So, if they were to go to KDOT and ask for free entrances or two access points in some locations, they would have to ask for variances and waivers and all this and that and the other, because they- KDOT's policy would not entitle them to that many entrances, so.
Just wanted to know how to handle it.
We're trying to help them.
You guys have any other questions for Jason? Okay. Well, thank you for your work.
Thank you. I appreciate it. And like I said, any questions, if you want to get in contact with me, Austin has my information, so.
The county, did they give you any specific feedback that we should be aware of based on the review of this?
I don't know if the county has seen this. I think KDOT approached the county to see if they wanted to be involved, and then they could expand the corridor study farther, east and west, and they did not want to be involved, so.
Okay. I thought you made a comment that you went in front of the commissioners. Did I miss anything?
Not yet. I'm going to try to get ahold of some of them and talk to them about it, and just see if there's any input that- ideas that they would have.
I just wondered if they had any.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. The next item is about Charles Swinman. Austin, do you want to give an update on that and tell us how we should proceed?
Charles Swinman approached me about being listed as an operator for the city of Marysville for the sole purpose to advance his certification to wastewater level four. He stated it wouldn't be- he's coming to work for us. It would just be fulfilling a requirement that KDHE has, operators advancing, that they be listed as an operator at a municipality or as a utility, a water utility. And that's what he requested of me. We sent some questions to Craig, our attorney, and he had some more questions about it. The two main ones is he had were, "Did it obligate him to us, or us to him?" I haven't found that it does. And Charlie hasn't emailed me back, but in the first conversation, he didn't think it would obligate or put any liability on him, which is what I had a concern about. If he's- because under my understanding, I thought if you were listed as an operator and something goes wrong, that you were held liable, because you're the operator of that system. But he assured me that only if he was at the incident itself, whatever it may be, that he would be liable for that, for any damages or anything like that, regulations. I felt comfortable moving forward, but I want you guys to feel comfortable going forward as well. If you want to wait for Craig's final, go ahead. Say so. I'm fine with that.
Does Charlie have any kind of timeframe that he's going to have?
He didn't say any timeframe. Well, he did mention why he wanted the certification level four. I think he wanted to advance his career, and that's the reason why. And I don't know if there's a timeframe on that.
And so, Craig's going to be at the next meeting, right?
Yes.
And so, do you guys want to just wait till Craig's here at the next meeting?
Yes.
I see all the elected officials for next meeting are here, so they heard all- everything they have to say, so.
Perfectly fine.
Okay, so we'll do next meeting? You'll put it back on the agenda? All right. The next item is the consent agenda, which has some convention and term request, and the two fire contracts, one with Elm Creek and one for Marysville Township.
Move to approve consent agenda. The mayor has signed both the township's fire requests.
I second it.
Is there any discussion?
I got a question. If one place, township, goes for a three-year deal, and the other one goes for a one-year deal, shouldn't the one-year one pay a little bit more since it's an inconvenience for the city to have to do the paperwork twice more?
Yeah, that's a good thought. There are some circumstances that I- that are the township's fault.
I know most of the circumstances. But what I'm saying is, if this is going to become a habit, shouldn't it be brought up and said we pay more?
That's the- I mean, that's- yeah. I mean, that's a fair comment.
Okay. So, at this time, you're okay with it? All right. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Five-oh. The next item is appropriations ordinance, which is on the- around the desk. The total amount is $324,037.51.
What is the difference between what was in our pocket?
It looks like about $4,000- oh, $3,500.
Debbie, can you tell us?
I think there was some sewer stuff on there, for sure.
Yeah, the sewer went from 41 to 43.
Was the majority of it?
It purchased meter pits, meter pits.
And water.
And water, yeah. It was-
That lift station, remember that? There was alarms and-
Yeah. Work on lift stations and some meter pits. Were some of the main ones.
Who was the contractor?
Those were our stock.
They were what?
The meter pits, the-
Stock.
Inventory.
The inventory for meter pits, and then-
Okay, so how was it put on here?
Who was the vendor?
Under what vendor?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And environmental and processing. We bought two fence monitors and mega alerts. That's that 2,200. The meter pits were like 800. That environmental and processing.
Has a motion been made?
Yeah.
No.
No.
Well, I move, may I make a motion, Mayor?
Yes.
I move to approve the appropriations ordinance number 3665 with corrections presented.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
B. Singer?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Gross?
Yes.
Schroller?
Yes.
Throm?
Yes.
Five-zero.
All right. Good job, Matt. Okay, Austin?
I had one thing on my report. And we had an admin finance committee meeting last week, and then we had another one to reassess it this evening. I think. Do you want to explain the difference? What I had was the recommendation from the first meeting, and then we reevaluated some changes. And the admin finance committee came to consensus of those that were there. Was it 62 cents?
Yeah. We decided to do a straight increase of 62 cents per person across the board. That would equal the amount that was shown, approximately the amount that was shown under the COLA plus 25 cents per hour. We decided to make it straight across the board. And then, we'll go ahead and proceed with- Our recommendation was to go ahead and proceed with the merit raises. And the merit raises will be either zero and 20 cents, anywhere from 20 cents to 40 cents, depending on the department head's review.
Zero to how much?
Zero to 40. So, yeah. There'll be some tiers set up.
And so, it would- our big discussion was, if you look up that last page, where the 63,305 is the impact that's going to be have, the very last column at the very bottom, the 63,305 is the amount that will impact the- the maximum amount that will impact the P and L in 2018. And then, obviously, what he did is he prorated the raises based on the review dates in there. So, the impact will be significantly more in 2019. And so, that's why we met, to make sure we were comfortable with that. And we decided, our final answer was that we would go ahead and make that recommendation. And then, when the new council comes in, they can come and adjust it if they want to going into the next budget cycle. But we felt like the 62 cents, you know, last year, we had 32 cents. 32 cents and plus-
In 2016, we had the 32. Last year, we did 25 and .75%.
Last year, it was 25?
So, 2017, we did 25 cents and .75% on their anniversary date.
Okay. So, we decided to give it a bump. At the bump, well, you know, covers some of the cost of living, a minimum of the cost of living, and a little bit more than that. So, it's double, almost double what we gave last year. Wouldn't you say that's a fair analysis? Because if we gave- we gave 25 cents, you said plus a .0075?
Point- no, yeah, yes, yes. .0075, yes.
And this would be to bump up the wages so they're more competitive?
We did an analysis, or I should say, Austin did an analysis, showing that there were several of our positions that we felt were less than comparable cities. You know, we didn't feel like we needed to make that jump all at once. And we also wanted it to be, going forward, more merit-based. In the last five, six years, how many times do we have a step increase? We did it across the board, and we really want to transition to a more merit-based increase. So, we gave a significant bump, or I feel is a significant bump, 25 cents to 62, and plus the potential to have up to a 40 cents per hour increase in this year.
And that would occur on their anniversary date?
Yeah, the additional bump. So, the 62 cents per hour would have become effective January 1st, 2018. And it would still give us the same numbers that's on the schedule, it's just handling it a little bit different. And our intent was to get away from, at the beginning of the year, to just give a flat rate increase. We, as a council, we can always decide to give a cost of living increase. But to stop giving that, like, for this year, it's the 62 cents includes cost of living. But just to give that bump across the board, we really want to transition to we may- we can vote and decide if we want a cost of living, but then not have to worry about that additional bump till they do the merit raise. Does that make sense? How we're trying to change it? It should work. This is our first year. It's a test. It's a- we'll lay the groundwork and see if it comes to fruition. But that was the intent of the council. And I hope that you note that in the minutes, that that was the intent of the council, is to get away from an across-the-board bump at the beginning of the year, and that their increase in hourly rate will be at their merit reviews. Okay? Do you guys have any questions about that?
Anything better than presenting, Chris?
I have one question. If we would be able to make it effective corresponding with our paid periods-
And what was that mean?
So, we don't have to do, well, it'd be December 31st to January 13th would be our- So, we don't have to do part-hours.
Make it effective January 31st?
That would be super.
Oh, well, that's easy enough.
Yeah.
And we can do that? You guys have any other questions? We talked about, just so everybody fills in, we talked about potentially doing the merit increases as a bonus, and giving it a dollar amount when the reviews happen, rather than an increase in an hourly rate. We kind of went back and forth. And Austin kind of sided with the hourly rate increase, so we kind of went with him. His recommendation. Are you guys okay with that?
Yes.
So, with that being said, Darlene, would you like to make that motion?
Oh, wow. Well, I move that we do 62 cents per hour per person, which will include cost of living and a bump effective December 31st.
2017.
2017.
Full-time?
Full-time, yes.
Full-time.
And do you want to go ahead and make the second step of that, or just want to vote on that for now? We can vote on that for now. Let's do that first.
I second.
You'll second? Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So, that's five-oh. And then, the second step? You want to get a shot at it, Darlene?
Yes. Then, at the time of each employee's annual evaluation, then they can be- they may or may not get a merit raise, and it can be up to 40 cents.
Per hour?
Per hour.
Per person?
Per person.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any further discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Five-oh, okay.
I do have a question.
Okay.
Can we consider part-time as well?
At this time?
At this point, because as many would agree, the more a part-time can fill in for somebody else,
The less expensive it is.
The less expensive.
Less expensive it is, and I want them to have more incentive to be here. Either, it doesn't, I don't think it would cost, if it does cost more, it won't cost that much more to raise them the same. It's just a step along.
How many part-time people we have?
How many? We have four part-time.
Three, I think. Two officers.
Two officers, and one water. And one water.
So you have two officers?
And one water.
And one water, that's it? You say three?
You have to get a lot to dump.
She's, she's a seasonal.
Okay.
And when she comes back, I think we typically give her, I think, do we give seasonal raise?
We did in the past, I think, but usually.
So we have three part-time?
Three part-timers.
So two officers, one water. The part-time of the water has only been there less than a year.
Right.
How long has the officer's been there?
Quite a while.
Quite a while.
When we move that, that employee from a seasonal part-time, did they get a raise?
And she's the lowest-paid, I believe, of everybody.
Your thoughts?
It'd go from a, I'd have to look, eleven-something to-
Eleven fifty-six.
Yeah. And I think I actually included her in full-time staff, just for numbers. Eleven, yeah, eleven fifty-six, right there.
That's one part-time, what's the other part-time name?
I don't have the other part-time in there, because the police have a whole reserve That's where we potentially save a lot of money, is where the police fill in for other police.
Don't we have, like, a six-month probation, and then we bump people up, or do we not have that?
Not necessarily. I mean, we have a six-month probation to evaluate them.
Do we bump at that time?
Sometimes if it's recommended by the supervisor.
What did you say, our part-time officers make?
She put in that whole thing out, I think. Is it on there? Nope. She cut that off.
It's not on there. You guys, I'm just trying to digest this. Do you think a part-time employee should get as big a raise as a full-time employee?
I don't think so, no.
I have, I'm having a hard time with that. I'm okay, like, if you give them half or something, but I'm not sure I want to give them a whole sixty-two cents.
What about a fifty-cent raise?
How about a quarter? About a thirty cents?
Well, half would be thirty-one cents.
Thirty-one cents.
Thirty cents.
Thirty-one? Can we, you make it half, what they're giving?
At least we, I mean, yeah, at least we're showing that we're thinking about them as well.
Because they have to work half the amount of hours. But I'm just saying, I have a problem bumping up our full-time. I think you guys are in agreement, right?
Yeah.
So somebody make a motion on what they want the raise to be, and we can discuss it from that point.
I move we adjust part-time wages by sixty cents an hour, effective December thirty-first, two thousand and-
You want it that high?
Thirty cents.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thirty cents an hour?
Yeah.
I said, you said sixty.
Oh, sorry, thirty cents an hour.
And we were like, where'd that come from?
Thirty, yeah, thirty.
Thirty cents an hour? Is there a second?
I'll say a second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Five-oh, okay. Anything else we need to look at regarding this?
No. I think that's all I have.
Okay. Just, just to give you a heads-up, you know, Austin gave this analysis of the fifteen cities that are close to us, and I've brought this up many times since I've been on council, to say where Marysville sits. And the whole thing about, in my opinion, is we have a high evaluation and we have a high mill levy, and I just want to make us more efficient with our monies. And I think that I'm hoping and praying that the merit will kind of do that, and that we will be, or at least on that part of it, I know it's becoming more efficient, has to do a lot more with just our employees. But I mean, at least I think that's a step in maybe making, improving efficiencies. And of course, I'm not standing beside them and watching them work, so I don't know if it's truly a problem or not, but I guess what, the numbers I can look at and say, you know, that with our high evaluation, that our mill levies should be less compared to other cities of size. And I understand, you know, that each city is different, you can't just compare it flat across, but I sort of look at each of the financial statements for the other cities to see what they're doing, and everybody does, you know, some people have zero reserves, some people have two million reserves, we have two million reserves, some people have, you know, two percent carryover in their general fund a year, and some people have twenty-five percent. And we, as a council, just get to make those decisions, what we want those balances to be, or how much we want our reserves to grow. But I really do want to try to make sure if there's any efficiencies we can have in our city, through looking at these other cities, I would like to implement them, so. And that's a task for Austin.
And I'd say that our employees are one of our best assets of the city.
I know, we do have a lot of experience.
Most important assets.
So, okay.
Mayor?
Yes?
It just occurred to me that maybe on their evaluation, I mean, every now and then, somebody comes up with a very brilliant idea on how we can save money, or how we can do something better, that provides a better service, maybe that could be a point on evaluation, no matter what level they are, worker, supervisor, Austin, if somebody comes up with a really good idea that we can see results, maybe that should be a consideration on their review.
Is that built into the plan anyway?
No, I mean, no, because it's, the evaluation's mainly on the employee themselves, and how they can do better. Now, if they, in the process, come up with a great idea, we're not adverse to, in fact, I always ask for great, I always ask for great ideas.
I know when you said you had your staff retreat that you talked about it, but I don't know if you brought anything back to us? Did anything come from that?
It got the wheels turning, just talking about stuff, and I basically sent them on their way going, keep thinking. Because, I mean, we're making great strides. I feel like, I mean, we're, this coming year, we're going to upgrade our systems to conservatively save five thousand dollars just in this building, a year, going forward. That's an efficiency.
That's right. That's what I'm talking about.
And then, all the, all the lights out in the shop, shops, all the shops are now LED. They've been incorporating that in their daily tasks of how they can make use of energy efficiency, the low hanging fruit and all that stuff. And I always ask them, how can we do stuff better? And it's, and it's surprise, it really doesn't surprise me anymore, on how many people, how our guys come up with good ideas of how to save money and stuff going forward, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Awesome. Okay, city clerk, you have any?
I have none.
All right. Standing committee reports, street, this isn't streets, but the streetlights, did you send that list to Cade Dover? I forgot to ask you.
No, I was trying to work out how to find out the numbers, because, because that helps them the most.
Oh, because I had somebody come and say, we have streetlights out, and I said, well, where are they? And I was at a social event, so I wrote it down on a napkin, and I gave it to him, and I said, let Cade know these streetlights are out, so.
No, I was working on that.
Okay. So, standing committee reports, street?
I had, I had a lot of comments today about the Helfring parking lot, that it was very icy. And I know in the past, when we, we had a big snow, wasn't last year, that the Helfring parking street didn't get bladed, and then it gets packed down and very icy, and there are a number of senior citizens who eat at the Helfring Center, so that's very dangerous. And I suppose it's just, isn't on the, on the priority, but I think it should be.
It was sanded well at three o'clock.
Today?
Once we got, once we got the calls, it was sanded when they went out and sanded. With, and then we got some calls, and then we went and re-sanded it, so.
Well, we appreciate the calls.
Yeah.
I mean, we don't know it's icy until they come and tell us, so I appreciate that.
No, and people were looking out for them, so we-
And so we responded, so thanks for bringing it to our attention.
Yep.
Thanks for going back out. Anything else on the streets? Water, sewer? Parks and rec? Did you find out if they've done anything out, like you?
Not yet.
Okay. I just asked if they had done the grading.
No.
Not yet.
Not yet. Okay. Cemetery Airport? Police Fire? Admin Finance?
Um, I wondered if, in the coming year, we could talk about, like, the nuisance codes, having, having some, setting something in place so that somebody would be issued a ticket and have to go to municipal court.
She wants a fine.
Yes, have a fine.
She wants a fine for nuisances.
Because we have no teeth in our code system.
We have no codes ordinances.
Nobody goes around and looks at some of these places.
Well, they can go around and give, they can go around and warn them, but they can't do a thing about it, because we don't have an ordinance to enforce it. So that's where we need to start.
Well, we do, we have the paper trail, we don't have a fine. She's wanting us to implement a fine from like step one, to incentivize them to get her done. Correct?
Yes.
Which we can definitely get that drafted up, we can see what other cities do.
Because every year, it's the same people, defenders.
Same people.
They're a bunch of garages with whole-
I know, but still.
There are garages that are falling down, and there's, some of them have got, some of the houses people are living in need to be updated too, a little bit and stuff.
You got cars on the streets that ain't moved for six months.
Some of them don't even have proper tags on them, and I thought the police would ride around and look at them. You see grass and weeds growing up underneath them, you'd think the police would stop and look at the tags to see if it was current or not.
Once they get knees with it, they put three wheels on them and a jack.
Yeah, they definitely do.
So I guess, not only the fines, but we need to, more enforcement.
Yes.
So we will. Okay. And Darlene, did you notice on that, I mean, Municipal Training Institute, they're having a planning and zoning on January nineteenth at McPherson?
No.
I thought maybe you might want to go, I might go with you. I don't know if anybody else is interested in going, but-
At McPherson.
The which one?
On January nineteenth.
Which one?
It's, it's Planning and Zoning.
Planning and Zoning, okay.
Yeah, have you ever gone to that?
Not to Planning and Zoning, though.
I thought it might be helpful for me to learn more in that area. But if anybody else wants to go, just let us know.
Since you're talking about training, I figure, let's see, you're, you're all out January twenty-fourth.
Is it government day?
Local Government Day. If you want to go, I leave early, that's the warning. I-
But he drives.
I drive. I have only, realistically, three spots.
I'm one.
And one's already taken up.
And he's one.
Twenty, twenty-fourth, January twenty-fourth.
I think it's a Wednesday.
Wednesday.
Wednesday the twenty-fourth.
Wednesday the twenty-fourth, it's an all-day affair. I go early in the morning, so I could talk with representatives, our representatives about local issues that we're having, and what's going on in the, in the state. And then in the afternoon, we have, they have an actual presentation, they have the FIOR mayor contest wrap-up, they have actual representatives come and talk, usually it's like the, the president of the senate, or one year, the governor showed up.
We sat in on a committee meeting last year, that was kind of interesting, didn't she? Or did you go back?
I didn't go.
You mean, you don't?
But it was, it was, it was fun, just who was running it? Help me.
Elaine Bowers.
Elaine Bowers, thank you very much. She was the head, she was chairing the committee, so it was interesting to see our government at work, it was, it was kind of cool.
And we went into a session, too.
Yeah. No, it's always, it's always good to go up and have face-to-face, face-to-face time with our legislators as they're going into the new session. I'm inviting current and future council members, if they want to go. Obviously, the future ones will be on the council at that point in time, so let me know if you want to go.
We'll all get sworn in next time, so be sure and come.
Tell them it's in Topeka.
It's, well, yeah, it's in Topeka, yep.
And what time you leave?
About 6:00 AM, probably.
He drives.
I drive. So, we can talk about if-
At the next meeting?
I have to, I have to schedule-
I wouldn't, doesn't it let them know?
I have to, I have to schedule the meetings, well, when the car's filled up, is pretty much.
Is that all you're taking? You're going to take whoever wants to go, right? If they want to add another car, they'll just have to drive it home.
Yeah, you can come if you, if you drive.
He's not going to tow them.
I'm not towing anybody.
Not towing.
I could put a little thing on the hitch on the back.
Well, it's just that, not just when your car's full, that's all it can go.
No, 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 no. More people can go.
Anybody wants to go can go.
Just have to drive yourself.
Just have to drive yourself. So.
Okay?
Austin?
Yes?
I'll plan on going if I sign up to the council.
Marking you off.
Oh, you're full.
Let's see, no, there's one more, unless Darlene, you?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I'm full.
But you can come. You just might have to drive. Okay. No wage or appointments, no city attorney, I don't know of any reason for an executive session, so we will do roundtable. I just want to point out that we'll be doing new board positions next year, next meeting. So if you desire to be on a specific council or board, let me know, and I'll try to work around that. And Kevin's surgery is Friday.
Friday.
Our prayers and thoughts are with you on Friday. That is successful, you heal quickly, you're up running soon. And the last thing, I have some little gifts that, for the outgoing council. I should have given this at the Christmas party, but you're going to get them here. So, so Denny and Vicky and Keith, we all started at the same time, four years and nine months ago, and we were only supposed to serve for four months, right, Denny?
Four years.
Four years, and he, he had to serve an extra nine months, so.
Overtime.
So it's been really fun, and-
They get overtime.
And Bill was gracious to fill in when I was elected as mayor, so he's served for two years and nine months, he didn't expect to serve two years and nine months either.
It's supposed to be just two years.
Yeah, it's supposed to be two years. So I was trying to bring little gifts, kind of tie into all the things you brought to our council, which rounded us out. So for Keith, who's not here, he was kind of the equipment farm guy, you know, equipment, so I brought him tools. So he, I, that was my gift to him. And for Bill, you know, he's the West Star guy, he's the electric guy, all the power thing, so I brought him a light that he can attach.
Those are pretty handy.
That's right. So thank you for serving.
Thank you, Carl.
And sharing your light with us.
Thank you.
And for Vicky?
Oh, no.
I brought, so Vicky, what I'm going to miss about hers, her passion for Ward Three. Vicky loves Ward Three. So I brought her a little heart that has number three on it.
Aww.
So she'd always remember. And the other thing Vicky is famous for is driving around, checking things out, so I, I thought I better give her a car wash. So that, we will miss you.
Thank you.
And Denny, I had to, you know, you, it was a toss-up what to get you, whether I buy you, you're also a drive-around guy to see what our workers are doing, but you're also a coffee guy to find the heart of our community. So I went with the coffee, so you can buy coffee at the next round. So thank you for your service, I appreciate it. You know, the key thing about council is that everybody brings something different. Everybody, and, and we're blessed by all the knowledge that's brought and all that you share, so it's going to be hard to replace you guys, and, you know, I'm sure that this incoming council, we will have, have big gifts as well, but I do appreciate all the time that you've committed to serving our community. With that being said, Bill, your turn?
The only thing I've got to say is I've enjoyed it, and I've learned a lot from all of them, and I appreciate the lesson, the lessons that I've had.
There's a lot to learn, isn't there? Yeah. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Darlene?
Well, my thanks to you four who are going off, and then also I'd like to say, I really liked the way Ward Two came through with the Christmas decorations.
Oh.
And I hope they're out there buying more of those lights on sale.
Light of, Ward Two had lots of lights.
Mm-hmm. Do we know the winners?
Well, it was in the paper.
From page.
I haven't, I haven't-
Well, I'll get it by museum.
Tomorrow afternoon.
Museum one.
The museum.
The business.
The museum looked really nice.
Yeah.
And the business one went to who?
Museum.
Oh, that was the business one?
Yeah, that was the business.
Okay, so what else was there? I know Lindquist, Kathy and-
Yeah, Gary.
Gary Lindquist got an award.
High out in-
Oh, Chelsea and-
Yeah, out in-
Chelsea and-
Hartley Ridge.
Tyler?
Yeah.
The church. The church.
And the church got reason for the season.
Yeah, reason for the season.
Do we get them all?
And
Banisters.
Banisters got, for the Clark Roswell, is that right? So anyway, we had a lot of lights, I've driven through a lot of communities, and we did have a lot of lights, so it's really been a nice, I wrote Michelle a thank you for arranging it, so. Anything else, Darlene?
No.
Vic?
I want to say this has been an adventure, being on council. I'd like to say that I've learned something from each and every one, personalities all different, and as the advocate is, I think it's in there every time that says, we're all men think alike, no man thinks at all, and we all definitely think differently and are willing to stand our ground when we start talking across the table about, I think this and I think that, until we come to a conclusion, or at least each of us offers our vote to match our conviction. I hope that people, thank you for everybody who's called me, and everybody who has wished me well, and the ones that have asked me to stay active, you know, at the community, and there's so many ways to offer your talents, your knowledge, your passion to the city of Marysville.